All right, good evening. I'd like to call the November 7, 2022 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Blackburn for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor Connolly. Tonight, I'd like to offer up a prayer. It is extracted, or it's part of the Dalai Lama's personal favorite prayer, and it is from the Buddhist scriptures. And it goes like this. "May all beings everywhere plagued by sufferings of body and mind obtain an ocean of happiness and joy. May no living creatures suffer, commit evil, or ever fall ill. May no one be afraid or belittled with a mind weighed down by depression. May the poor find wealth; those weak with sorrow find joy. May the forlorn find hope, constant happiness and prosperity. May all who are sick or ill quickly be freed from their ailments; whatever diseases there are in the world, may they never occur again. For as long as space remains, for as long as sentient beings remain, until then, may I too remain to dispel the miseries of the world." And now, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I have no changes to the agenda. I would request that the council add a closed session.
All right.
Move to approve.
Move to approve the agenda, get the second, uh, the closed session.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk, excuse me, individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Okay. Our first speaker is Ms. Lenora. Ms. Lenora, if you are present, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Was that the lady that Michael was wearing?
I think so, yeah, I think they're in the hall.
Well, we'll come back to her if she comes back.
Okay, yes, sir. Next speaker on the list is Mr. Stephen Hardy-Braz. Mr. Hardy-Braz, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Councilmembers, staff. I'd just say thank you to Councilwoman Daniels and the mayor for attending the Bike Walk Summits recently. And I know that other people are busy and stuff, but normally I come here to raise an issue about accessibility or safety, things like that, but as much as I am known for bringing attention to deficits, I try to be fair and bring you to attention to assets and positive comments as well. It's the latter that I'd like to bring to your attention this evening. You know, Bike Walk NC had their summit here, and as a board member and vice president of the organization, as well as the founder of these statewide summits 12 years ago, holding it here in Greenville gave me some pause. I had some reservation because this would've been the first time, or was the first time, we held it in a non-identified bicycle-friendly community. But I know the city's working on that application, and it's being developed. The Bike Walk Summit was a great success and very energizing to many people. But as I learned as we reviewed it, something happened over the course of the summit that was recently told to me. Apparently, a woman was attempting to cross a busy road in her wheelchair. As I was told, the first person in this walk audit group to notice that, that the ARP was leading, was our own very, our own very, our very own mayor, excuse me. He saw the danger that this woman feared, and he and Don Edwards ran out to the road to stop motor vehicle traffic so this woman could safely cross. While we work to make our streets safer and accessible, it is comforting to know that good people leaped to the opportunity to help each other. For that, I thank you and look forward to working together to the day when everyone, every crosswalk and sidewalk is accessible and safe for everyone. I think this speaks highly to the mayor's character, to jump out, put himself at risk, and help somebody cross our road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for continuing to advocate for us.
I need to sighs, too.
All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay. Next speaker is Mr. Nicholas Adams. Mr. Adams, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank you for having me, council. It's good to speak here tonight. I just wanted to bring attention to an issue. I've gone to East Carolina University for the past three and a half years, and I live at the Horizon Apartment Complexes. It used to be called Sun Chase, but they just recently went under a rebrandment. And I just wanted to bring an issue about the intersection at my apartment complex. Now, the apartment complex actually is a, it intersects probably one of the most busy street, or roads in this city, which is Greenville Boulevard, and it is used by the Horizon Apartment Complex, the hotel across the street, as well as Campus Point student apartments, and the, a brand-new RV store across the street. Now, during high-traffic hours, specifically 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., is impossible to leave. And it's also one of the most dangerous intersections, at least in my experience of living here. I personally witnessed four wrecks, assisted someone in getting out of their car after smashing into the ditch, and her four children. And I've heard of at least three deaths at the intersection, including one young lady just a few weeks ago. Nearly 500 students live at the Horizon alone, and, but to, the intersection actually serves two bus routes between Campus Point and the Horizon. During these hours is not only impossible for the buses to leave, or anyone behind them, but it is also impossible for people to get in half of the time. There are some good Someritans who will stop traffic. However, I feel like the intersection could be more efficient if a traffic light was installed in its place. And even though I may be leaving in a couple of years, if a traffic light is put in, this intersection will no doubt help students and people of Greenville alike in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, we appreciate it.
We don't usually comment, but I want to make sure, Mr. Adams, to get your contact information. I represent that area. I've been very concerned about traffic on 10th Street. I've been working with the DOT. This is a grave concern to me, so I'll make sure to get your contact information so that we can talk later. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Yes, sir, we do not have any additional speakers.
I don't think I see the lady that was the, I don't think so. Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Henry Williams II. You've probably heard my name so many times because I've been running for Pitt County Commission, and also ran the last time for U.S. Congress. My complaint here today is concern about the police department. On October the 3rd, on October the 3rd, I called for a police officer to come to my resident. Well, at 2:19 in the morning when I made that call, 2:45, he called me back and said, "Hey, what's going on?" Well, I began to go in detail and to tell him what happened. So, after I got to, got through explaining to him that I thought somebody had been in my house and everything, the way thing I left thing, so he said, after we finished the conversation, for my many years as a police officer, he tell me, "You go lay down now and rest yourself, so you'll feel better tomorrow." What kind of stuff is that, to go lay down? When I was a police officer, regardless of the call, we still had to go out and check it out. Then that call, my call went into Pitt County. So I called the Greenville Police Department Dispatch. I said, "Could you tell me the full name of the officer who I just spoke..."
"I can't tell you."
I said, "Well, can you tell me why his badge number..."
"I can't tell you that neither."
I said, "Well, sir, what is your name?"
"I can't tell you that neither."
Click it, he hang up on me. I said, "Wow." So, Pitt County Sheriff's Department was still on the line, listen. And she started smiling, she said, "Sir, do you want me to call him back?" I said, "No, that's okay, forget it, thank you." She said, "All right, have a good night." I came down the next day, and I checked out what was the badge number of this officer, and I found out what his badge number was and everything. But the idea, I could've been held with a gun. I could've been shot laying on the floor. But he never show up. When I went to the station, by being an ex-police officer, I found out that he filed a false report. His report was that he came to my resident and everything okay. I said, "What?" He came to my resident. There was negative on the dispatch and negative on the police officer. This is why I came today to complain.
And that's time.
All right, thank you.
Where do you live, Mr. Williams?
I live on Bancroft, 809 Bancroft.
Can we let him finish, please? How much more you got to say?
Oh, what I'm gonna say, my many years as a police officer, you don't tell nobody, "Go to bed and lay down and everything will be okay." But instead, he never came. I checked behind him, he filed a false report that he came to my resident. His badge number 536, I'm not gonna indicate his name due to the fact, but his badge number is 536. And this is real bad, because most of the time, the policemen, you see them, you don't see no police officer at 7:30 to 11:00. I mean, this is the truth. I don't know where they be, but they might be on Green Street, up there, sleeping, talking. I see them all the time, hiding behind here. We need better service in this. With the high-priced tax that I pay in Pitt County, up in the 1,000, I think I should get better service. What I'm concerned, I could've been shot. The people could've been, they beat me up, you know, I could've been there for days. But he never show up. This is what I feel like needs to change. And also, the dispatch, it was outrageous, the way he said, "I can't tell you." And hung up on me. You need, we need better service in Pitt County. We need more, we would like to see more patrol than air. You don't see no policeman out here at 7:30. You get out here and ride at 7:30, 11:30, you don't see. Only time you see, when the chain shift, then after then, you don't see them no more. They gone. I mean, the truth of the night. This is what I came to express my opinion.
Mr. Williams, could you provide your contact information with Mr. Ken Graves right there, so that we can have somebody from the police department reach out to you?
You may. I have written it down. I filed a report. Yes, I think I filed a report to the mayor already, too.
Okay, well, we'll be happy if you'll make sure you give Mr. Graves your contact information.
Okay, I sure will.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate the comments. I'm sorry that you had a bad experience, but I will say that our police officers, our police officers do an incredible job for the city, and I know that we're very understaffed right now, but from you coming here today, it'll allow us to make and provide better service to the citizens of Greenville, so thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seen none, we'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of public art for Emerald Loop Shelter on the Town Common. Item number two is a resolution and deed of release for abandonment of a 10-foot wide and 20-foot wide electrical easement across Tax Parcel 19617. Item three is an ordinance amending Greenville Utilities Commission's Sud Parkway Substation Project Budget. Item number four is an ordinance and reimbursement resolution approving Greenville Utilities Commission Water Capital Projects Budget for the Water Main Rehabilitation Phase III Project. Item number five is a resolution of intent to close South Park Drive. Item number six is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for Bent Creek Phase 6 Gordon Drive. Item number seven is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for Farrington Trace, Farrington Drive, and Langashire Drive. Item number eight is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for Langston Farm Phase 11 Sections 1 and 2. Item number nine is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for Sage Wood Phase 4 and 5 Sage Brush and Dakota Drive. Item number 10 is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for West Haven South Section 5 Blazer Drive Extension. Item number 11 is the city's consent of collateral assignment of encroachment agreement to support the Evans Street Hotel. Item number 12 is an authorization to receive funds for the COPS Office FY22 Community Planning Development and Micro Grants Program. Item number 13 is authorization to receive funds for the 2022 COPS Technology and Equipment Program Grant. Item number 14 is the authorization to purchase 1609 West 3rd Street, known as Tax Parcel 04578, and 1611 West 3rd Street, known as Tax Parcel 4579 from Pitt County. Item number 15 are reports on bids and contracts awarded, and item number 16 are various tax refunds greater than $100. That's the consent agenda, Mayor. Question about process, if I just wanted to ask one question, do I need to...
Pull it.
Okay, all right. Well, this cannot may, I would like to pull item number one from the consent agenda. Item number one.
Move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
Okay. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
I had one more comment. I was hoping that you could read through that consent agenda one more time. Especially the, the...
14 was...
The resolutions. Yeah, that was fun. All right, we'll move on to item number one.
Just a quick question. My understanding of our conversation, first of all, I'm super, super excited about this, the art, the Emerald Loop Shelter that's gonna be on the Town Common. My understanding of this, reading through this agenda item, is that we don't have the actual art itself, we have who is going to be contracting for the art.
That is correct. We, this agreement is with the city and the Pitt County, Pitt County Emerge. It will be up to Emerge and Pitt County Arts Council to do an RFP for the artist. That is correct.
Yeah, that was my only question. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six-zero.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Item number 17, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 17 are presentations from boards and commissions. We will have two presentations this evening, correct? There will not be a presentation from the Historic Preservation Commission. We will call, we'll have a presentation, Logan Harrison will provide a presentation from the Human Relations Council, and Landon Elks will provide a presentation on the Youth Council. Gentlemen.
Hello and good evening. I'm Logan Harrison, a member of the Human Relations Council. I have thoroughly enjoyed the past three years working with the Human Relations Council, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the council's annual report. The council's vision is working to create an inclusive community where trust, acceptance, fairness, and equity are community standards. The role of the council, which has become even stronger in its resolve to bring awareness to the human relations issues as established by ordinance number 382, was created to develop and strengthen ties among organizations working in human rights, to study any conditions that present prejudice or discrimination against protected classes, to work to prevent discrimination by developing educational materials and programs to promote equal rights, understanding, inclusiveness, and acceptance, to continue to partner and consult with state, federal, and other governmental authorities on any matters, disputes, and controversies within the city's jurisdiction regarding fair housing complaints, specifically tenant-landlord complaints, make recommendations to the city council on procedures, programs, or policies that promote diversity, acceptance, equal rights, understanding, and inclusion, to provide information and referral resources on human rights issues to members of the community, and to finally foster open communication about human rights issues in Greenville. The council was responsible for several projects, events, and activities aligned with its mission. To accomplish our work, the council depends on three separate work groups. The first being the internal work group, a group primarily comprised of human relations members and city staff, which collaborate on coordinating events, projects, and activities. Secondly, the external work group, a group comprised of both council members and community members who share information and collaborate on projects related to shared goals and objectives. And thirdly, there's a coordinator, the Human Relations Council's staff liaison oversees and coordinates activities and all events. The staff liaison works with the council and members of the community to accomplish the council goals. The Human Relations Council, the council's committees, and their partners have accomplished quite a bit this past year. We began the year with in-person meetings, and we've continued to have our meetings in person, to ensure every voice is heard and conversations have been productive and fruitful. Initiatives that occurred in the 2022 year are Observance of Fair Housing Month. In April 2022 marked the 54th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act 1968, and the 35th anniversary of the State Fair Housing Act. The council and the Greenville Area Property Managers Association sponsored a seminar. Their annual seminar was on Tuesday, April 26. Presenters were Attorney Kristen Wills with Brownlee, Whitlow, and Preate, Ms. Kathy Woolard with Harvard Group Management, and Attorney Daniel Worrell with Legal Aid of North Carolina. The Honorable Mayor PJ Connolly provided opening remarks and read the proclamation. The seminar was held at the Hilton, and there was 93 participants. An additional fair housing seminar was held on Tuesday, October 18, at the Hilton. The seminar facilitator was Mr. Terry Berry from Florida and a former North Carolina resident. The purpose of the seminar was to provide information to property managers on how to create a welcoming and encouraging environment for staff and residents. After the horrific shooting in Uvalde, Texas in June, the council, in partnership with Mr. Robert Moore and his billboard company, created a memorial display to show Greenville support to the families of the two teachers and 19 students who worked and attended Rob Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. The display ran for 21 days, a memorial of the 21 lives lost. The council's inclusive community initiatives, of which I am chair, included the city's 15th Annual Inclusive Community Breakfast, which was held on Thursday, September 22. The theme was mental health, a community-based approach. Panel members were Timothy Livinggood, an accomplished psychiatric healthcare administrator, Karen Harrington, Director of Student Services for Pitt County Schools, Dr. Nathan Harper, a psychiatrist and medical director at ECU Health Medical Center, and Dr. Valerie Kissler-Van Reed, Director of the ECU Center for Counseling and Student Development. The Honorable Mayor PJ Connolly provided the welcoming and opening remarks, and the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Glover provided closing remarks. 135 people attended. While the work we have done over the past year speaks volumes on its own, we were able to be recognized on a large scale with the honor of hosting the statewide meeting of all the human relations commissions in the state, right here in Greenville. Collaboration with other commissions and participation in training ensures future creativity, ingenuity, and productivity. Dignitaries across North Carolina, including Representative Brian Farkas and Senator Don Davis, were present and gave remarks. Human relations professionals near and far gathered and collaborated, which presented a lucid vision of what the Human Relations Council is trying to create. The Honorable Mayor PJ Connolly and City Manager Anne Wall welcomed the visitors and gave remarks on behalf of the city. Others providing remarks were Francine Pilpatpeña, Vice Chair of the Human Relations Council, County Manager Janice Gallagher, and Summer Badwin, Chair of the Human Relations Council. The presenters were Sharon Goodson and Christina Dillard with the North Carolina Community Action Association, whose various programs and partnerships collaborate to assist individuals who face challenges due to hardships. 125 people were in attendance. On Thursday, October 27, the council received orientation and training from Mr. Gene Troy, the Executive Director of the North Carolina Human Relations Commission. The training was based on ordinance number 382, which created the Human Relations Council. The duties and responsibilities of council members and the role of council members were discussed. The Greenville Human Relations Council and the Connecting People Planting Seeds to Dismantle Racism Committee hosted a July 16, 2020, critical conversation held in the St. Paul's Episcopal Church's Parish Hall. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, an invited guest list of 12 leaders gathered for an open forum facilitated by Dr. Jennifer Copeland, Executive Director of the North Carolina Council of Churches, and an ordained minister in the United Methodist Church. The critical conversation sparked lively and productive insight with the question, "What does racial equity look like to you?" Four task forces were created, each with a mission to work towards racial equity. One in education, two in business and economic opportunities, three in law enforcement, and four in criminal justice. This project is almost complete, and the council is hopeful that memorandum of understanding will be in place between the city of Greenville and Pitt Community College soon. After the project is complete, a copy of the report and the report's executive summary will be provided to each of you via notes to city council. Members of the Human Relations Council would also like to present the report at a future council meeting. Staff has responded to 116 calls from January to November 5, 2022. Calls from landlords may involve the tenant not paying rent, late fees, and evictions. Calls from tenants may include landlords not making repairs, security deposits, working appliances, evictions, and problems with neighbors not getting along. The Human Relations Council will explore the feasibilities of the following projects for 2023. Firstly, the restoration of a driver's license. According to the NC Justice Center, North Carolina is among the remaining states that automatically suspends a motorist's driving privileges for failure to pay a traffic ticket. The corresponding fines and fees in addition to the ticket, often more than $190, are used for a range of things, including contributing to law enforcement retirement funds. Because of this, more than 322,000 drivers in North Carolina have suspended driver's license for unpaid traffic fines and fees. Not having a driver's license can create barriers to opportunity by making it hard to get a meaningful job or affordable housing. It can also make it hard to attend doctor's appointments or care for family members. Low-income families and families of color are disproportionately affected by driver's license suspensions based off of traffic debt. Secondly, the council has formulated a housing committee to explore a number of issues for renters, such as affordable rental units, and how COVID and inflation has impacted the housing industry. Thirdly, expulsion, which is a legal process to remove a criminal conviction or a criminal charge from a person's record, and to seal or destroy the state's records of the arrest, charge, and/or conviction. The council's plan is to partner with the Legal Aid of Eastern North Carolina Group. For the council to continue doing their work, resources are needed to fund our projects. The work of the council is vital for the efficient functioning of our government and the continued prosperity of our interpersonal relationships. The council respectfully requests that the city council allocate, allocate funding to the Human Relations Council and its programs and initiatives. In the upcoming year, we strive to be ever-present and always cognizant, understanding the issues of the day, but also the successes of our moment. The Human Relations Council appreciates the continued support of the city council and awaits future deliberations and implementations for the betterment of all in Greenville. We strive for each person in Greenville to find themselves in good company. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the Human Relations Council for all that you guys continue to do for our community with the ongoing effort, so thank you. That's a tough act to follow, right there.
I know.
He was on point. You can do it, you got it.
Let's see if I can do better.
You got it.
All right. Good evening, I'm Landon Elks, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share the Youth Council's annual report. So, the Greenville Youth Council was created on August 11 of 2005 for high school students. Its mission and establishment of the council has provided an opportunity for youth to be more involved in the community, and has created a platform where youth can express their concerns and the challenges they face. The mission is to encourage youth to get more involved in their community and local government with a vision of a community where all youth are valued, empowered, and feel connected. The council currently has 10 members. The council, our advisors, and the staff liaison continue to recruit for new members. Our staff liaison and the advisors of the youth council, which are Human Relations Council members, attend all meetings and assist with implementing council activities and events. Council meetings are held on the fourth Monday of each month at 6:30 p.m. During 2022, the council primarily focused on and sponsored the following events. The council sponsored and participated in the 2022 Gameplay Event that was held on August 22 at the South Greenville Recreation Facility. The Gameplay Event allowed youth to play competitive, non-violent games while building trusting relationships with law enforcement officers. The Gameplay Event allowed youth to, the Game, Ted Saul, the Chief... The Gameplay Event allowed youth to -- Ted Sauls, Chief Ted Sauls and other officers not only helped students build trust among each other, but the event helped students increase respectful interaction between law enforcement and youth. The council's Thanksgiving food drive for 2022 is ongoing. We're working with Pitt County High Schools and private schools to collect and donate food to the Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina. The Youth Council has also been discussing themes and topics for upcoming community dialogues in 2023. The council will continue providing a creative outlet for youth to learn and experience the value of teamwork, to grow respect for themselves and others, to develop a strong work ethic, and to understand what it truly means to be a responsible citizen. The council's plans for 2023 are to first sponsor a series of community dialogues. The first dialogue is scheduled for February of 2023. These dialogues are designed to give youth a platform to discuss current events and matters of the heart. We also intend to participate in the city's Adopt a Street program. And lastly, state youth council. The Greenville Youth Council wishes to be sponsored and chartered by the state. This will provide opportunities for council members to attend leadership training, connect with youth across the state, and learn about other local councils. The council's primary goal is to give the next generation of youth leaders a voice in Greenville and Pitt County by empowering them to advocate for causes relevant to all youth and to collaborate and serve as one united voice. Thank you all very much for your time and support.
You nailed it. You did it. Ms. Daniels, very, very impressive.
Yes.
Two very good presentations. You guys are doing a very good job. So, thank you for all your hard work, and keep it up. All right, we'll move on to item number 18.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 18 is a resolution authorizing condemnation of certain property for the build grant project. I'll call for Assistant City Attorney Danae Alexander for that presentation. Ms. Alexander.
Good evening.
So, as Madam City Manager said, this is a resolution for authorization of condemnation for our build grant project. As you all know, we are currently in the midst of our timeline to make sure we're in compliance with what FHWA or the Federal Highway Administration has requested of us. Telx is our third-party consultant who is helping us with the property acquisition. In terms of filing condemnation actions, we will have outside counsel who will be assisting us with this. And then in terms of a new date, that is now a milestone. As of October 26, 2022, the city put the construction contract out for bid, and so time is of the essence in terms of us being able to continue acquiring these easements and/or right-of-ways. So, with that being said, before you tonight, I've got two parcels in which we're requesting authorization. One is parcel 05426, located at 1,000 West Fifth Street. The other parcel is 67546, located at 912 West Fifth Street. These are, like I said, easements and/or right-of-way. We're not displacing anybody in terms of the property that we're taking for this particular So, with that being said, I would ask that you all approve our requests for authorization in terms of condemnation. One thing, or a couple of things I do want to note, is that there might be additional properties coming. We're hoping there are not, but there's always potential in terms of us still being in the process of acquiring these right-of-ways and/or easements. And even though you all are approving us to move forward with condemnation, Telx will still be working on our behalf to try to settle these particular claims that are being And with that being said, I do have a map, as always, that shows where these particular parcels are located. As you all can see, 1,000 West Fifth Street here to the left, and then the 912 West Fifth Street is to the right. And so, with that being said, I would ask for you all's authorization.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number 19.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 19 is the adoption of the 2023 state and federal legislative initiatives. I actually just had a few comments about that, and we'll be happy to answer any questions from council. As the city council knows, the city, we, through the city, we work with our legislative partners on issues that are important to the city. We try to raise those concerns to both our state and federal delegations. This year, we did, we developed our legislative agendas in a slightly different manner. We brought both the state and federal lobbyists in for one meeting and met, and through those meetings, we met with key city staff as well as the council to understand issues and concerns related to that legislative agenda. The vast majority of our legislative agenda, both on the state and the federal side, really relates to funding needs that the city has to help us advance projects. So, those agendas are, those legislative agendas are in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Blackburn?
I can tell a lot of thought and intentionality went into these. It's sort of presented kind of as a packaged deal. I know we met with the lobbying group and had a chance, we talked, we had, that was a wide-ranging conversation. This doesn't look a lot like what I remember those conversations going like. It doesn't mean they're not good. It just means that they're different than some of the, some of what I was hearing. So, I guess there were those meetings, and then it sounds like there were conversations with city staff, and then these all came together.
Correct, and I think the, using the expertise of the lobbyist as well as those items that are sort of within the, sort of the purview, the responsibility of the city and leaning on, and particularly as it relates to the lobbyist's understanding of hot topics and key issues. If there's something that the council wants to add, certainly the council member can make an addition to the legislative agenda.
Well, one, one, one point, and it's a small point, and I wouldn't hold up the whole agenda for it, but oppose any unfunded mandates. Well, a lot of times, there are mandates, there are guidelines that come down, and you don't always know how they're going to be funded at first. And maybe they are not funded. Maybe they become part of the public responsibility, you know, whether it's public health and safety, whether it's, you know, any number of things. So, when I see oppose any unfunded mandates, just sort of this global opposition, I, again, I wouldn't hold up the agenda, the whole agenda for it, but I, I, I never heard that come up in our conversation, and I never would have supported it.
Right. Well, and I think it's important to point out that it's a whole lot of people related to it. It is not unusual. I think that that item about opposing any unfunded mandates has been on our legislative agenda for many years, certainly a lot of the years that I have been with the city. I think that we understand that the state and the federal government may sometimes provide mandates to Greenville, and we ask that if you do mandate us to do something, that you give us the means to be able to do it, and that is to provide the funding or a way to raise funding, and that's the reason that's in there. But that's, that one has been in that legislative agenda for some time.
Yeah, and I would, I would second that, too. I would think it would be very fiscally irresponsible to have something get mandated on us and not know how to pay for it. I mean, I think that that's, that's something that's been there since I've been the mayor. I know that for certain. And I think that's extremely important because we, we go through a very long budget process every single year, and we budget it down to the dollar to know exactly where everything is going, and for, you know, a state or a federal government to come up and say that you have to do this, and then you have to pay for it, we've got to take funds away from a different area to be able to cover those mandates that have been handed down that we had no discussion in. So, I mean, I just, I think that's a no-brainer.
Well, I appreciate that it's been on the agenda for, the legislative agenda for a long time. This is the first time I'm seeing it, and again, I know that, you know, there are guidelines, there are things, there's regulations, there are things that are proposed and even mandated that you, you just got to figure out. But, but moving on from that one, what is a mega site?
A mega site is a very large industrial site. The state of North Carolina pursues mega sites, a substantial number of acres. They're done to, to move forward. The state actually creates mega sites to, for economic development purposes, for the idea of launching, recruiting a large employer. The state has had mega sites. The most recent one, I believe, was in Chatham County. It resulted in a, a, I believe it was a battery-making company that provided a significant number of jobs to the area.
Okay. Thank you for those answers.
Any other questions, comments? Move to approve the item.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 20.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 20 is the termination of the red light camera program known as the wind-down agreement. I'll turn it over to City Attorney McGurk for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This item is entitled Termination of the Red Light Camera Program and Wind Down Agreement. The city has a, has had a contract with ATS for the last five years for the red light camera program, and that contract expires on November 15 of 2022. So, that's next week. As of that date, and council has not authorized the city to extend the contract. So, as of that date, the cameras will cease operating, and ATS at some point will remove the cameras. The city is here, staff is asking for council authorization to enter into a wind-down agreement with ATS. A wind-down agreement would resolve any pending issues between the city and ATS. For instance, when you receive a ticket, you have 30 days to pay it. If someone receives a ticket, for instance, on November 15, they will still have, that ticket will still need to be paid. So, we need an agreement to process pending citations. And ATS also has infrastructure at the city's five intersections, and they need time to remove their infrastructure from the intersections, and we're working now on an agreement, and we want to have that agreement in place before the 15th. So, again, we're just here to ask for authorization for the manager or the mayor to enter into a wind-down agreement.
Councilmember Smiley?
The city could renew this contract if it wished to, right? Not the wind-down agreement, but the contract with the red light camera. There's, I mean, that's, this council could decide to do that if it chose, correct?
That's correct.
And I'm looking at stats you guys sent us, that staff sent to council, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, that shows at the intersections over the last four years, while the program's been in effect, at the intersections where these cameras have been in place, total crashes have been, have dropped by 30%. Does that, does that, that seem, based on the information you've seen, that seems?
Yes.
And in five similar intersections that did not have red light cameras during this same period, crashes went up by 10%. So, the delta between the intersections that have had these, these cameras and the ones that did not is 40%. There's been a 40% reduction in crashes as a result of this program. And so, the decision to not, the decision to abandon it and not renew it, it seems to me, is not, is, you know, disadvantageous to the citizens of Greenville, you know, people who presumably don't want to be in car, don't want to be in traffic accidents. So, but there's no legal reason that we cannot continue, that we cannot renew this for, for another five years if we chose to.
That's correct. I mean, it's public knowledge that the city is defending two pending cases, and of course, we can go into a closed session and talk about pending litigation.
I'm not interested.
Yeah, yeah. So, but I would say, yes, there's nothing prohibiting the city from continuing these agreements if the city chose to extend the agreements.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Anybody want to entertain a motion, then?
Motion to approve?
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Glover, I see Mayor Pro Tem Glover. Councilmember Smiley?
I would argue against approving this, this, this motion. Very, and I'm not, you know, I'm not having more, I have no more questions for you, Councilor. The, there's a lot of things we do that we don't know if it works or not, that we hope will make people's lives better, that we hope will save people's lives, we hope will save people's property, and, you know, we just don't know, but we take our best guess. This is one we know works, right? We had, five years ago, the city had 10 dangerous intersections. We had a list. We put, we put cameras at five of them. I think we chose the five most dangerous ones. And now, we look five years later, and the five most dangerous accidents have gone down by 30%, and the five, the next five, not as dangerous ones, traffic, the accidents have gone up 10%. This seems like a program that has worked, and it is, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city or the council or their citizens to abandon it. We have, five years ago, when we started this program, I think we were the number one most dangerous, had the most dangerous roads in the, in the state, and that number has, it is lamentably high, but it is still, I think we're down to six, so we have made real progress. I imagine that increasing red light enforcement at the 10 most dangerous intersections in the city would have had some impact on the dangerous nature of our roads, and I don't know why we'd back away from that. So, I would argue, I don't, I don't believe that this is going to pass, I mean, I believe this vote is going to pass, but I would argue that council should vote against or withdraw this, this contract and this motion and entertain a continuation of this program. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I mean, I will make a comment and say, you know, I do want to say that the task force that has been put together from numerous community partners has done an incredible job with working on, on public safety and coming up with different initiatives to be able to reduce those crashes. I know our new chief, Sauls, will continue that good work with the organization and continue to come up with different ideas. And I hope the city doesn't give up on traffic safety. I think it's an incredibly important thing for our community. We've seen a lot of people that have been hurt and killed in accidents throughout our city, and I know Councilmember Robinson has brought up that I think we're number six in the state right now. We were number one.
Number six in the state. We're number one by county.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of work that still needs to be done, and I hope that, you know, we'll use some of those resources that we have, and I think that'll be something that we'll talk about during our budget process this next fiscal year about making sure that we continue to focus on traffic safety throughout our community and pedestrian safety. I think those two go hand in hand, and I think that there's a lot that we can do as a community still. So, that's all I have to say. Anybody else have any comments?
All right. Motion's been made, probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five one.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to number 21.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 21 is a notice of termination of the interlocal agreement with the Pitt County Board of Education related to the red light camera program. Again, City Attorney McGurk.
Mayor and Council, this is a related item. The city also has a contract with the school board, which is on a five-year track, and it appears to terminate at the same time as the ATS contract, but just to be crystal clear, that the contract with the school board is terminated. The, the city's staff is asking for termination to inform the school board that the interlocal agreement is terminated and to provide them notice.
Councilmember Smiley?
So, the way this has worked is, over the past few years, five years, I guess, most of the money which has been raised from the red light cameras has been made available to the school board.
That's correct.
If I understand it, it's been something like $6 million? Is that a rough figure?
It's a lot of money, yes, something like that.
So, in addition to making the lives of the people of Greenville safer and reducing the number of traffic accidents at our most dangerous intersections, this program has provided $6 million to our school system. Again, I think council should withdraw this motion and enter into an extension of this agreement and continue to save the lives of our citizens and fund our schools to the tune of well over a million dollars a year.
Councilmember Blackburn?
I just would like to say how much I appreciate Councilmember Smiley and his data-driven approach to this, and it's certainly very impassioned and very authentic. Council, are we, are we involved in lawsuits regarding this program?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Councilmember Smiley?
Has there been any finding in a court of law that our, that our, that it was, that this program was implemented, is illegal? I mean, I understand there's been a finding that the school system should get more of the money.
I think, I think you need to be careful about talking about pending legal matters in a public meeting, but I would say, I would say it's a public record. in a public meeting, but I would say, I would say it's a public record that, in the Farrington decision, that the schools were not getting the clear proceeds. That's what the court held, and the city, that was a court of appeals. The city filed notice to the Supreme Court, and that, we haven't, the city has not yet heard from the Supreme Court whether that case will be accepted.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? You want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Or second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Smiley?
Since my colleague brought up the legal decisions related to this, the only ones I'm aware of suggest that we should have given more money to the schools, right? So, I think that if that's necessary, you know, that we, if the continuation of this program would mean that we would simply give more money to the schools in return for saving our citizens' lives and property and letting the school system retain an even greater portion of the boon that has been given to them by this program, then that's something the council should be willing to do. So, again, I would urge council to withdraw this motion or vote against it and enter into a new motion that would allow us to extend this program. Thank you.
All right. A motion's been made, probably second. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five one.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twenty-two is the consideration of the purchase of public safety radios. I'll call forward Fire Chief Sanders as well as Police Chief Sauls for the presentation. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Madam Manager. So, we're here tonight to talk something extremely important as it relates to public safety, and that is fire safety and police radios. So, the purpose tonight is, the radio is the absolute most essential, mission-critical piece of equipment that public safety carries. So, the big fire trucks, the police cars, the, all of that, if we can't communicate, we can't do our job, and so it becomes the most, most important thing that we, we have. Also, the reliability of those public safety radios and the system is paramount to successful deployment of fire rescue and police personnel. So, as some background, the current radios that we have right now, they were obtained via a grant in 2009. Those current radios have reached the end of their useful life, and in a 2020 consultant study by TUSA, they were found that they had reached the end of life, and that beginning in 2018, maintenance was no longer available in those current radios that we have right now. So, this initiative, since that time, since 2009, technology has significantly improved since the initial purchase, and this includes mission-critical touchscreens to radios, heat-resistant radios for fire rescue, large and easy-to-locate emergency buttons when wearing gloves or in the dark, improved microphones, and improved antenna coverage, real-time GPS location within the portable radio for all personnel, and water and weatherproof handheld portable radios. So, currently, on department needs, fire rescue, it would be one hundred and fifty-eight portable handheld radios, seventy-two vehicle-mounted radios, and ten base stations. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Sauls to go over the police side.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, everyone. Just to continue on, on the police side, you can see that we're looking at two hundred and fifty portable handheld radios, and just make sure that we don't confuse anybody. You've got the radios like we were on our side all day long with the microphone that we talk on. The hundred and seventy-five vehicle-mounted radios, that includes everything from your special response vehicles, all of your police cars, your motorcycles, anything that has a, has a need to have a radio. It's extremely important to differentiate between those two because one is far more powerful than the other, and when you're in areas where coverage may be an issue, you really want the one that's in the car because I can get out easier and talk on it. The one that's on my body, which is sitting by my bag behind me, goes with us everywhere we go. The seven consolates are for dispatch, so those are, those are the devices that the dispatchers talk on to get the information out to us. So, those are new updated items as well. The terms and conditions for the purchase are the same as those associated with state contract purchases, which is also important for, for your knowledge because it definitely speeds up the way things are able to work and the way we're able to request this purchase. And it allows us to make the acquisition by piggybacking on that state contract if it is approved here tonight. The total project cost, you see there before you, five million four hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. It is extremely important, and we are extremely privileged to have received a three million dollar earmark, as you're already aware, from the information that's been provided to you previously, from a Department of Justice grant through the COPS office. And then we would be requesting two point four two four, six forty-eight fifty-four in installment financing. And staff, primarily myself and the fire chief, and all of the staff that has helped work on this project from the beginning, and it has been a arduous project that we have put lots and lots of thought into for many years now, recommend approval to move forward with purchase of the portable and vehicle-mounted radios for both police and fire rescue departments. And at that, we'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for the chiefs?
All right, bye.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Bell. He saw, he saw what happened to our city attorney here a few minutes ago.
I'm a quick learner, Mayor. Quick learner.
I know. I know you are. We appreciate that. All right. Motion's been made, probably second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
Item, Mayor, item twenty-three is the reimbursement resolution for the replacement of the public safety communications equipment. Financial Services Director Byron Hayes is happy to answer any questions the council might have about that. He's happy.
All right. This is our closer right here to end the day. Last two items.
Yep. Yes, ma'am.
Reimbursement resolution, does that have to do with the DOG funds, the DOJ funds?
The reimbursement resolution's actually a mechanism for the installment financing, so it's, it's just, it's a part of that process.
Okay. We're good. Thank you.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll go on to our final item, number twenty-four. Madam Manager?
Mayor, the item twenty-four is a budget ordinance amendment, number four, to the twenty-two, twenty-three City of Greenville budget ordinance, the capital projects fund, the engineering capital projects fund, and the special revenue grant fund. Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is budget amendment four. Budget amendment four includes adjustments to the general fund, the transit fund, the stormwater fund, the grant special revenue fund, and the fire rescue, recreation, and parks and engineering capital projects funds. Break down the amendments. We are transferring the rural transformation grant funding from the special revenue grant fund to the engineering capital projects fund in order to consolidate the Ficklin Street Improvement Project. That's a net neutral impact to both funds of a hundred, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We are re-appropriating funds for the Pitt Street Improvements Project within the Stormwater Utility Fund and increase of Stormwater Fund of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We are appropriating fund balance and transferring it to the Recreation and Parks Capital Project Fund to provide funding for the part-of-grant and Wildwood Trail construction. It's an increase of nine hundred thousand dollars. We are recognizing revenue received from the Pitt Greenville Soccer Association for the purchase of fall soccer uniforms within the Wreckin' Parks Department, an increase within the general fund of thirty-seven hundred dollars. We are recognizing additional grant funding within the Transit Fund for the MPO, Planning and Mobility Initiatives for the current year. It's an increase in the Transit Fund of forty-six thousand dollars. And we are recognizing the grant funding and the installment financing proceeds within the Fire Rescue Capital Project Fund for the acquisition of the public safety communications equipment mentioned in the previous two items. It's an increase to the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund of five point four million dollars. And lastly, we are appropriating grant funding from the Department of Justice COPS Community Policing Development Micro Grant for officer recruitment and retention, and increase in the grant special revenue fund of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which brings the City Greenville Operating Fund to a hundred and sixty-four point eight million dollars, and staff recommends approval of the city's operating funds, capital project fund ordinance, engineering capital project fund ordinance, and the grant special revenue fund ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions? Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Mayor Protam Glover. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We will now move on to the review of our November tenth, two thousand point two, City Council.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. On November the tenth, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. First board that we have is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn?
I intend to nominate Mr. Bill Redding.
Okay. Got that noted. Thank you. Next is...
His, his talent bank information is incorrect, so we can connect later, so you can get in touch with him.
Okay. That's fine. All right. Next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes. I need to keep working on that one, so that was continued.
Next is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Protam Glover?
Okay.
Okay. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. That's a nomination for the county seat. Councilmember Smiley?
Mr. Bastard, I think that you have, you circulate that to council.
I will.
And that's a recommendation we give to the county commissioners, and they make the appointment.
That's correct. Okay. Next, and these are direct appointments that we will make Thursday, is the Police Community Relations Committee. First is for Councilmember Blackburn.
I would like to continue that one.
Okay. Next is for Mayor Connally.
Continue.
Yes, sir. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor Connally?
Oh, my goodness. I had somebody, and...
Isn't that difficult to replace?
I mean, they just, the guy, the guy said that he could not replace the commissioner that was there before. Apparently, he's some big shot attorney that now serves on the city council.
Apparently, it's hard to get more when you had less.
I like it. I like it.
Is that the fellow in Chicago? I can follow up with him, the one that was on the show?
Yeah. I had a conversation. He, he had, he turned me down.
Oh, okay.
That's all right.
All right.
They won't have to hear any jokes like that, right?
Next is the Youth Council. Mayor Protam Glover?
Continue.
Okay. And that concludes the appointments to boards and commissions.
Thank you very much.
No, but we do have one more. Next is the appointment to the Animal Control Appeal Board.
I am still working on that, and I'm going to follow-up call tomorrow.
Okay. Madam Manager, that concludes the appointments.
Thank you. Mayor and council, at the November tenth meeting, the council will hold public hearings on the following items. Item four will be an ordinance to annex Arbe Hill South Phase Nine involving five point three oh six seven acres located at the current terminus of Plymouth Drive. Item number five is an, is an ordinance to annex the Craig Goetz property involving one point one oh acres located along the southern right-of-way of East Tenth Street and Elton Valley Road.
Bless you.
Item number six is an ordinance to annex Gray Fox Run property involving one point six zero one zero acres located along the southern right-of-way of Blue Bell Drive and adjacent to Gray Fox Run condominiums. Item number seven is a, is a consideration of an ordinance to annex the Pinnacle Fire Tower Self-Storage Property involving seven point seven seven three acres located along, between East Fire Tower and Bell's Fork Road and South Ridge Drive. Item number eight is an ordinance to annex the Williamson Family Trust property involving five point two six three acres located along the northern right-of-way of Spring Trail Drive and west of North Memorial Drive. Item number nine is an ordinance requested by Mann Family Partners LLC to rezone point four eight acres located at the current terminus of Oak Down from OR to General Commercial. Item number ten is an ordinance requested by Forelife Properties LLC to amend the future land use and character map for ninety point three seven eight acres from the industrial logistics and potential conservation in open space categories to the traditional neighborhood median family, medium, high-density category for Track One, which is eighty-seven point oh five nine acres, and potential conservation in open space category for Track Two, which is three point three one nine acres for the property located along the western right-of-way of Allen Road and adjacent to the Pitt County landfill. Item number eleven is this ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at thirty-eight ninety-five Olpec Tollis Road, known as tax parcel one four five five seven. Item number twelve is a public hearing for the Home Investment Partnership Grant American Rescue Plan dollars. The council will also have one additional item of business, which will be the resolution of the Historic Preservation Commission requesting the city council create a local landmark for the James Fleming House. That's the agenda for November the tenth, Mayor.
Is there any way you could read item number ten one more time? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. All right. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
I have no report, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to comments from the mayor and the city council. Councilmember Daniels.
Want to remind everybody that to vote tomorrow if you have not done so already, and that'll be all.
Very nice. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, thank you. This is a follow-up to my comments from last month. Last month, I became aware that the City of Greenville was listed as a possible creditor or claimant on bankruptcy documents filed by Compute North, a cryptocurrency mining operation in the Southern District of Texas. That bankruptcy filing is case number twenty-two dash nine oh two seven three. These documents are public information. In document one twenty-seven, exhibit B, page four, the City of Greenville is listed as a claimant, that is, an entity with a claim against Compute North. When the City of Greenville appeared as a claimant in a public document, at that time, it, that filing became the public's business. Because it became the public's business at that moment, I ask for more information. City staff discussed this, our city's listing in these bankruptcy documents with Compute North's counsel. They shared their findings with members of the city council, and I would like to now share that information, those findings, with you, members of the public. My first question was, did the City of Greenville provide money or anything of value to Compute North? The response is, the City of Greenville has not provided any money or anything of value to Compute North. This has been verified by all city departments. City staff assisted Compute North and the Greenville ENC Alliance with a zoning text amendment through answering questions, providing clarifications, and reviewing language, as we do with all applicants for zoning, map, and text changes. The Greenville ENC Alliance paid the fee for the zoning text amendment. Compute North received an erosion control permit and paid the fee. Question, is the City of Greenville among the creditors for the Compute North bankruptcy filing? Response, the city attorney discussed this matter, Compute North's debtor filing of a Chapter eleven bankruptcy petition, with the debtor's attorney. Compute North named the city as a potential creditor in the bankruptcy proceeding only because of the city's connection to GUC, and Compute North had sought a site within city limits. The debtor's attorney reports that bankruptcy records presently show that Compute North does not owe the city any money. City staff is not aware of any debt owed by Compute North to the city. Question, if so, who approved this transaction and when did it take place? Response, no transaction was approved. Question, what reason or purpose was given or existed for the city to provide money or other item of value to Compute North? Response, the city has not provided any money or item of value to Compute North. And last, what steps will the city take to pursue the return of money owed? Response, city staff is not aware of any debt owed by Compute North to the City of Greenville. I share this information because it will certainly come as a relief to the people of Greenville, who have continued to express grave concern about cryptocurrency mining potentially operating within our city. Indeed, other places haven't been so lucky. Project Spokane, a cryptocurrency mining firm in Montana, was sued by its electricity provider, Energy Keepers, Inc., for three point seven million dollars. That company filed for bankruptcy, and it refused to pay its outstanding utility bill. Further, the Brookings Institute found that in upstate New York, where a quarter of all U.S. cryptocurrency mining occurs, energy bills have risen because of the increased demand for electricity. Small businesses and households now pay an additional seventy-nine million dollars and a hundred and sixty-five million dollars respectively in annual electricity bill costs. Nationwide, attorneys and courts are calling for more transparency from cryptocurrency mining companies, and that's especially true when they file for bankruptcy. Last month, I noted that there was tremendous opposition to cryptocurrency mining in our city. That assertion was questioned. As follow-up, I will refer to the many years I have spent as a community organizer, long before I first ran for and won a seat on this city council. Together, we saved a hundred and twenty acres of parkland from development, obtaining more than five thousand signatures on a petition as part of that effort. Together, we prevented a disastrous... Together, we prevented a disastrous 50-acre Walmart commercial development on Port Terminal Road, so I know what opposition looks like. When discussions took place to allow cryptocurrency mining in our community, opposition was so strong that the Pitt County Commissioners voted not to allow it. When the city discussed it, opposition again appeared in large numbers. Indeed, protests took place outside of City Hall. A new nonprofit took shape to fight against it. These dedicated community members surely would call their opposition tremendous, and I agree. Last, our planet is in peril. The UN's Climate Change Conference, known as COP, is taking place right now in Egypt. As public leaders, we have to take that responsibility on our own shoulders to safeguard the health of our community, to avoid environmental damage, and to direct our community in directions that protect the planet, not destroy it. As a planet together, we need to reduce our carbon and greenhouse gas emissions. We are on track for catastrophic changes within the decade if we neglect these responsibilities. These are issues, these issues are questions of environmental and economic justice and human and animal rights. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Robinson?
One of the most powerful things you can do as a citizen is vote. You can complain about your elected officials and your economy and your government, both local, state, and nation, but if you complain without voting, you shouldn't complain. So, please, if you've not voted, please go to, go tomorrow for your candidate of choice and exercise the power that you have as a citizen of the United States.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell?
No comments.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
For decades, African-American people were not allowed to vote. So, I say to all of you, do have the privilege to vote, to please exercise that right tomorrow. Tomorrow will be the last day. Early voting has ended, so please, please exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. I echo the sentiment of several councilmembers up here, make sure you go out and vote tomorrow. What time do polls open? Is it usually 6:30? Okay. It's early in the morning to probably 7:30 at night, if I had to guess. So, make sure you go out there and vote. It's very important. I think both parties that I've heard have said it's the most consequential election of our lifetime. Hey, both parties never agree on much, but they agree on that, right? Which is a good thing. Also, I want to make a comment about some of the comments that were made tonight. The only thing that was missing was an apology because some of the claims that were made about a month ago were unsubstantiated and were not actually validated before they were made. And one of the comments was made that people were worried about the information, but the information was never out there until it was brought out there, and it was found to be unsubstantiated. So, people worried for an entire month over nothing whatsoever. So, I do want to make that comment and say that, you know, it is very incumbent of us as elected officials, not only to work with one another, but also to be able to be putting out information that is correct to the public, because it's a disservice to the citizens of the city that we live in to give out information that's not correct. So, I recommend that everybody work together like we have been working together and have a great relationship and work on making Greenville a better place and not tearing it apart. So, and Councilmember Smiley gave me the numbers, or the times. Tomorrow, the polls are open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. You can go on the website if you don't know where to vote. You can put in your information. I think you type in like voter search, NC voter search, or something like that. You can put in your information, find out your polling location, to make sure that you exercise your right to vote tomorrow. Without further ado, I would like to ask our city attorney to give us the motion to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318.11a4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. That is the motion.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tem Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are officially in closed session.